Welcome, everybody, to our study session today. We obviously have a couple of folks missing, and I am filling in for the council president as your council president pro tem. And I believe councilmember Zepone will be here, but a little late, and we've got councilmember Bingle online. So why don't we jump into our first item here? It's the building opportunity for housing update. We've got Casey Downey and Tim Thompson. Spencer Gardner is here as well. Welcome.
All right. Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Tim Thompson, principal planner, along with Casey Downey, our associate planner, here today to talk to you about building opportunity for housing. This is our Phase Two portion of the project, which is related to the code amendments, essentially making those Boca standards, that interim ordinance, permanent. As you're all aware, in July of 21, Housing Action Plan was adopted. The mayor declared a housing emergency. And then in July of last year, an interim ordinance was adopted, referred to as Boca. To help address this crisis, we looked at our past.
So part of the housing crisis right now is the population growth that Spokane is going through, but this is not the first population growth that we've seen. In the early 1900s, the population of Spokane tripled, adding about 70,000 new residents. And we need to find a place to house everyone. That is when ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, and other middle housing types started to be developed in what are now a lot of our historic neighborhoods. And it was with these housing types that we were able to house a lot of the people who are coming into Spokane. Now, even though we see that the benefits of middle housing help provide housing in Spokane, we did eventually see throughout the country the weaponization of some of the zoning regulations for the purpose of exclusion. With the Supreme Court ruling that race could not be a determining factor when selling a home, a number of jurisdictions, again, throughout the country began using zoning regulations that increased lot sizes, increased setbacks, limited housing types, specifically to raise the cost of housing in certain neighborhoods, effectively creating economic segregation. Now, the acknowledgement of this past does not negate the benefits or positive attributes of single-family homes today, but it is a lens that we can look through when looking at our current zoning, excuse me, current zoning regulations, as well as the current rise in housing costs, particularly when about two-thirds of our residential land today is dedicated to detached, single-unit homes. And those housing types is not what helped house, again, the population growth we saw at the beginning, or not the beginning, but the early 1900s of Spokane. And we still need a diversity of housing to provide housing for the residents who are coming into Spokane today, but as well as our current residents. So when looking at the past and acknowledging that middle housing can provide those benefits, the city began looking at middle housing and how we can make them allowed and more feasible throughout the city. That is when the interim ordinance was passed in July of 2022, which allowed the four units on all residential lots. And then with that approved by council, we began immediately working on the work plan to create those permanent regulations. The first phase was amendments to the comprehensive plan, which was passed by council in July of this year. And we're currently working on the code changes. We did go before Plan Commission at their public hearing on October 11, and they recommended approval of the proposed regulations with some changes, which we will go through. And we are anticipating being before City Council at a public hearing on November 13. With that timeline that we've been going through, we have given a lot of presentations. Our focus has been to be as transparent as possible with what these proposals are. This is just a handful of the presentations we had given of note. We did present before the Spokane Human Rights Commission, and they did verbally state that they're going to provide a letter of support. And once that's received, it will be sent to City Council. And again, Plan Commission at their public hearing recommended approval. Presentations are not the best way for everyone to be engaged in the process, however, and we've been really focused on making sure we can hear from as many residents with as many diverse backgrounds as possible. To that end, we had a community survey, which was provided in seven languages. We received over 3,500 responses. We've had one-on-one interviewers with interviews with developers and stakeholders. We've conducted community organization roundtables, faith-based organization roundtables. We have conducted resident forums, one in each council district, again, just trying to hear from as many people as possible with as many different backgrounds as possible. And with that engagement, we've really heard three main themes. The first is that scale and size is the most important aspect for individuals when looking at infill being built next to them. The second is that design matters. And the third is that everyone has their own housing journey, so there's really not one-size-fits-all housing type that can meet the needs of everyone. So we do need to focus on providing a diversity of those housing types.
So based on what we heard in those resident forums, as Casey mentioned, form and scale, design matters, and then everybody's housing journey, those were really our guiding principles as we move forward with these proposed text amendments. So again, form and scale, we're regulating the housing by form and scale and not by the housing type. We're proposing to remove the maximum density standards for lots less than two acres in size. So essentially, we're not putting a limit on the cap of number of units, because there are other standards, both largely dimensional, but also market standards, that would really limit the number of units someone could potentially put on their lot. We're proposing objective design standards. We are proposing to modify the parking standards, and there's a couple of different options that we can talk about a little bit later. And then really just updating other development standards to help support the feasibility of that middle housing. And really what that speaks to is changes to our subdivision regulations, and in particular, the implementation of a unit lot subdivision that would allow lots to be further subdivided to a minimum of 1,200 square foot lots. But we also took the opportunity to clarify some existing processes and then reorganize some of the code sections to improve the usability. So when we talk about regulating by form and scale rather than housing type, this graphic will illustrate a structure that is the same. Each of the three structures is the same from the exterior, but inside, we've got, on the far left, we have the single unit detached unit. We've got a duplex and a fourplex. So what these graphics indicate is if we focus on the structure and not necessarily worry about what goes on inside the building, we get more opportunity, more choice, more This proposal includes some changes to dimensional standards. So we've got reduced setbacks for our front and rear lot line. There's an increase in height limit from 35 in our current code up to 40 feet. I will point out that the Boca standards are at 40 feet, so we're just keeping that 40 feet as we move into the permanent standards. We've also taken a look at how we regulate height, so we're using an average grade to the peak, just because it's easier to explain to folks. Because in the field, average citizen, you know, they just want to know how tall the roof's going to be. So we've looked at how to measure height. We've included some impervious surface standards to help address some of the stormwater concerns that we've heard. And then, again, back to that size and scale, we're proposing a maximum building footprint. So in the case of a lot, 7,000 square feet or less, the maximum building footprint would be 2,450 square feet. So on a 7,000-square-foot lot, potentially what you would have in order to try to maximize it is you either have one building at 2,450, or if you can have multiple buildings, then those footprints would have to be smaller, provided that together they equal that 2,450 square feet.
So the second theme that we heard really was design matters, not just for aesthetic purposes, but also to improve safety by having eyes on the street, improving walkability, creating a sense of community. So with that, we are proposing design standards. These standards apply to middle housing as well as single-unit homes. This is because the direction from the state with House Bill 1110 is that middle housing and single-unit homes should be treated equally. So the design standards create a bare minimum, but we still feel like there's flexibility provided, a lot of menu of options, you can have architectural variety while just creating that baseline of design that's appropriate. We'd also like to note that if there is an architectural style or theme that we weren't able to anticipate, there is an opportunity for deviations or waivers or going through a PUD in order to get some different design allowances, so long as you can show that you're appropriately meeting the purpose and intent of the design standards, we do have some flexibility there. But with that, we have window and entrance standards and garage requirements, again, focused on eyes on the street and improving walkability. We have building articulation and structure setbacks. These really speak to regulating the form and scale of structures to make sure they fit within the small-scale residential development of our neighborhoods. We do have landscaping requirements. We'd like to note that with landscaping, this is really just to avoid large pavement and just gravel, which can be bad for runoff and stormwater, and also absorb heat. Landscaping does not have to just be lawn. We actually encourage Spokanescape to be able to reduce water usage. And we are incorporating visitability standards. These standards do not require these units to be accessible, but it does provide guidelines on how to create units that are accessible. And most importantly, it allows for a deviation for projects that are installing an accessibility feature, so you can get a deviation from height or setback or building coverage or other regulations if you're providing that accessibility feature. So we're no longer penalizing units that are made accessible to encourage their facilitation to be built.
So that third tenant was housing journey. Everybody has their own housing journey. Everybody has their own housing needs. And so what we're proposing is to implement the unit lot subdivision standards, which allows for more flexibility to create smaller lots and potentially even smaller units. This is also intended to provide opportunities for homeownership and address some of the affordability concerns that we've heard. These changes will also help to preserve existing housing stock. We know that the existing housing stock is some of the most affordable that we have as compared to new construction. And so by allowing some of these larger lots to be subdivided, hopefully we can avoid the tear down and rebuild. We heard that as a concern as well. And so the unit lot subdivision and the allowance to create smaller lots, we hope will help to address some of those concerns as well.
Do you want questions now, or do you want us to wait? So I'm curious, on the 1,200 square feet, why that size and perhaps not smaller?
So the 1,200 square feet just came from the lot dimension standards, which were 50 by 85, I think it was?
Okay.
Was that right?
Because I guess where my mind goes is thinking, my big priority is laneway alleyway housing, and trying to see if we can't subdivide some of those properties to allow the ADUs to then front on those alleyways. And so what I'm curious about is, I believe the dimensional standard for ADUs is 700 and some square feet, which would imply then that they'd have to have an additional 500 square feet of yard before they could subdivide. And it feels to me like that is overly restrictive in trying to make that happen.
So I think there's a distinction here in that the 1,200 square feet would apply to like a standard subdivision, but if we go through, if someone goes through that unit lot subdivision process, they potentially could have smaller lots through that particular process. So I do think that that's addressed with the unit lot subdivision.
So I would just follow up. What's the fee going to be to go through that process? Because that could be discouraging if that's not a reasonable fee.
I don't know that we have a separate fee for, there is, the unit lot subdivision is an existing section of our code that's just under a slightly different name.
Yeah.
I don't know whether we have a different fee structure for that type of subdivision. Currently, that type of subdivision has only been used when it's accompanied with sort of a different approval process for the overall project. And we're proposing to make it easier to accomplish these by not having it have to conform to those other standards. So there might be several fees wrapped up in there, but we can do some research and get back to you with that.
That'd be great. And then my other question so far is just on the impervious, just wondering, and I think impervious makes sense, but it could add some additional costs. I'm just wondering, is there flexibility if they've got an alternative plan to take care of stormwater, where they could maybe do something different?
So the percentage for the impervious surface is related to when a drainage plan would be required. So it is possible that an alternative option present itself. I think there's enough discretion there to allow engineering staff to make that determination.
Great. Thank you.
So one of the items that wasn't addressed in the interim ordinance was parking, and we've heard feedback that parking can be a barrier to middle housing development in particular, as well as affordable housing. It's also feedback that the council heard, you all passed your interim ordinance this summer, that removed minimum parking requirements for residential uses within a half mile of a transit stop. So when we're looking at permanent changes, we're looking at navigating what type of parking regulations to implement. House Bill 1110 would require us to not require minimum parking within a half mile of their definition of a major transit stop, which is really just the city line in Spokane. And then the council ordinance goes further with no parking within the half mile of a transit stop. So with the proposal, we created a middle ground between those two as a proposal, which is no minimum parking for residential development within a half mile of the city's definition of a major transit stop. And that is a bus line that has 15-minute service or better for the peak periods. And that's about 10 lines in the city. So that is the draft, in the draft proposal that was presented to Plan Commission. At their hearing last week, Plan Commission did recommend substituting that parking language to reflect the interim ordinance that was passed by City Council. So the draft ordinance that would be presented to council to make a decision on with the Plan Commission recommendations will have the no parking required for residential development on sites located within one-half mile of a transit stop. We do have maps of the differences between a major transit stop and all transit stops in the back at the end, if you'd like to go over those.
Can I, I'll just, one additional thing on there. Obviously, I have some concerns over the parking issues, but I think if we could incorporate some plans between you guys and even code enforcement to talk about how we would plan for some of these areas where we do have some pretty big parking issues today, I think about Gonzaga, I think about Jeep Prep, it's starting to become more and more of an issue in downtown Hilliard. If we could provide some kind of a plan for how we would mitigate existing concerns, then I think that most people would not have an issue with these changes. And so we'd just love to work with you guys on kind of what I'm playing with on that, so.
I also share some of councilmember Cathcart's concerns around parking there. Are there any plans around an education campaign for those communities where parking is reduced, letting folks know if you do move into this neighborhood?
Yeah.
This is a neighborhood that's been established in this zone, so parking cannot be expected.
So I would say I don't know that we have any plans, per se, but we certainly could look to do something of that nature, do some outreach, inform folks. What we're hearing related to parking is that any new construction will likely still have parking, because there's a risk associated with not providing parking. And so what we're hearing is even lenders won't lend on projects unless they have parking.
Yeah.
So at least in the near term, until something significantly changes, parking will still almost certainly be required on the vast majority of projects that we see. But certainly, somebody could come in and propose a development and not provide parking, you know, if they have their own source of funding. So, you know, it's not out of the question, but I think there are other variables in the marketplace that will help to alleviate some of the concerns, at least in the near term, but.
Well, real quick, councilmember Zepone, I guess, has his hand up. Councilmember, if you want to go?
Thank you. I was wondering if this were adopted, the parking changes were adopted by the full council when this comes forward, would that be the end of the interim in doing outreach and recommendations on parking proposals, or would there still be continued information? I guess I'm asking because I'm curious to see what suggestions there might come from for commercial parking updates, too.
So, councilmember Zepone, that's a good question, and I think we would love to get some direction from council on that. There's a few ways forward. If council feels that they are ready to essentially make permanent what was done in the interim ordinance, you could adopt a version of the, or make some version of a parking change permanent, and then be kind of done with the interim ordinance. That could be done here. Council could adopt the changes, one of the sort of versions of changes that we've proposed. And then we could prepare a separate ordinance to remove the interim parking ordinance. Alternatively, if council is not quite ready to make a decision on what the permanent version of parking should be, it would be possible to adopt some version of what's proposed here, perhaps the sort of the bare minimum House Bill 1110 version, but keep the interim ordinance on the books. And then we could just sort of reiterate what the work plan is for getting to some kind of permanent change to our parking regulations. So I think as councilmembers, that's ultimately up to you. We're happy to take some guidance on where we should take that. And I spoke with Mr. Wright earlier, so he's aware of, you know, some of the issues we're trying to work through. And as we draft the final versions of the ordinances, that would be helpful information.
Welcome.
I did have a follow-up on that, though.
I was wondering about the commercial part of it.
Yeah, so the interim ordinance didn't really address commercial parking. I think we could, we might have to have some discussions about how much, how many, how much resources, I guess, we have as a department to really address that compared to all of the other changes that are going on. I'm not opposed to considering it. It's just something we'd have to talk about and see if that's something we can add. We'll be having work plan conversations for Plan Commission and as a department in the coming months, and preparing to have a work plan adopted at the beginning of the year. So I think that's a good conversation to have.
Okay, a couple more slides here. Obviously, we've heard a lot about infrastructure. Developments must still demonstrate adequate public facilities and services exist to serve that development. They either have to exist, or they have to be planned. I will point out that the level of service standards can be found in the city's comprehensive plan, in Appendix D, or, I'm sorry, Appendix C in particular. All of those levels of service are there, except the roadway levels of service, I believe. So for example, the level of service for water service is 45 PSI. They're all measurable metrics, and that's where it exists. In the near term, for some of these primarily single-family, existing single-family neighborhoods, we believe that capacity likely still exists, because as these subdivisions were planned and built, they were anticipated to have a density range of four to 10 dwelling units per acre. And what we found through some staff analysis was that many of those subdivisions were being developed at the four to five dwelling units per acre. So we do believe that there is some existing capacity in the existing infrastructure, the utility infrastructure, to help serve any of this new development that may come into these neighborhoods. And then lastly, what do these changes do? Well, we believe they increase feasibility of middle housing projects, they provide flexibility and variety, and they allow for creative housing solutions. So with that, we'll wrap up and be available for any other questions you may have.
Any further questions? We've got a couple more minutes here.
Just one more from me. Of the 3,500 responses that you mentioned, do you have that in a report, or is that, how did you sort that? Yeah.
So we do have a summary of the survey responses, and we can send it out to you. It was sent out before you're on the seat, so we'll make sure that you are given it. It's also on our website for any members of the public who may be interested. It's in a report format.
Does that include the input from like, community events and things like that, where folks have provided comments?
So we have a few different summaries. We have a summary of the survey. We also have a summary of the different roundtables that we've done. So, yeah, our website has a few of those. We can also be sure just to send those out to everyone, so they have them.
Perfect. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you guys for your work on this. I know we went over it a week or two ago, but I think we're all really good changes for the community, and I think that it'll help to catalog some housing that's sitting on the sidelines. So thank you for all of your hard work on this.
Yeah, second that. Anything else? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Jessica Stratton, on our capital improvement plan, you are up.
All right. Good morning, council. So today I'll be talking about the citywide six-year capital improvement program. I wanted to start off with some background. So the city of Spokane creates three budget publications annually, and they each feed into each other. There is the Streets Capital Improvement Program that is generally developed January through June, and the integrated capital management team oversees that. So I think Kevin Pacanza was the one that drove that. So council has already seen that. Council has already approved that. And that is because it follows the Washington State fiscal year, so it gets approved at the end of June. And then the Streets CIP feeds into the Citywide CIP, and that's what we'll talk about today. And then both the CIPs are multi-year, they're six years. So the first year in the plan, which is 2024, then gets incorporated into the annual budget. So those are the three budgets we work on all year long. So the Citywide CIP is facilitated by the Budget Office, but I will say you only see one of me here, but it's probably around 100 employees that work on this, in almost all departments. So I wanted to start with just a timeline. So the CIP is updated annually, and I'll go into that later. And it takes almost the whole year to do it. So what you don't see up there is January and February, that's when typically ICM is working on the Streets CIP. March 14 is when we opened up the Citywide CIP to all users for round one input, to kick off the annual update. It's open for about, well, a month, and then the Budget Office closes it, and we do mostly clerical sweep at this point. We're making sure that narratives are there. We're making sure comp plan, you know, elements are identified. We're making sure funding sources are identified. We're making sure that revenues match expenditures, things like that. Then we prepare a report to Cabinet, and in that report, we do a small executive summary, we identify new projects, we identified Plan Commission projects, because they see only those new projects that change the capacity of the city of Spokane's service levels. And we give a summary on unfunded capital projects that have been identified. Then in June, we talk to those departments that have unfunded projects, and we discuss why are they unfunded, why are they coming onto the program now, things of that nature. On June 5, we met with the Capital Review Committee. It's kind of just a broad informal term for all department or division heads that primarily focus on capital. So for instance, Marlene is very much there, IT's there, Jeff Teal from Facilities is there. We talk about citywide, is everything there that we expect to be there? Are there duplicates? Are there omissions? And then on June 20, we reopen the CIP for round two, and this is where we go in and make tweaks. We adjust what and make tweaks, we adjust whatever Capital Review Committee has identified, we get, we, like, estimated quotes are updated, whatever needs to happen. And then we close it again, and we, the Budget Office, do another clerical sweep and a strategic sweep at this point. Whatever information we receive from Capital Review Committee, or Cabinet, or those unfunded project discussions, we also ensure that everything has been addressed. On August 30th, we did release a draft CIP. It is on the city of Spokane website. And then at that point, we hand it off to Plan Commission. And for the first time this year, we did get the Planning Department's help to help with those touchpoints. On September 13th, Plan Commission did a consistency review on all the new projects that, again, change or potentially change the capacity of the city of Spokane. October 11th, the Plan Commission had a public hearing on the CIP, and then this is where we are today, council is finally being briefed at study session on the Citywide CIP. And we'll talk about next steps later. Okay, so that was all, just to tell you, this has been a work in progress for at least seven months now. So what we'll be talking about right now is the CIP overview, the funding summary, the new projects, the department summaries, and the next steps. So the capital budgeting process is dictated by SMC Code 717 in it. It says we will create a citywide CIP, and it will be multi-year in nature, it will be specifically six years long, and it will be updated every year. Now, the CIP is a part of the comprehensive plan, so when we update it annually, we are, in fact, amending the comprehensive plan. So that is why it's updated once a year. The prioritization of the capital projects, if they do indeed potentially change the capacity of the city of Spokane service levels, they need to be in alignment with the comprehensive plan. The CIP also addresses the funding statuses and sources, and the planning for capital needs not currently funded. So we do use the CIP as a tool to identify projects that don't have funding, but we only allow them in the out years, so years two through six. The first year, so in this case, will be 2024, if there's no funding, they are pushed out. So that is a distinction. So what is actually in the CIP? Well, this is going to be, in order to be included, it is a project or an item that is a tangible asset, has a useful life of at least five years, is a single item, or can be packaged into a single item with a value of 60 grand or more, and if it's part of the Plan Commission touchpoint, it needs to address Chapter Four or Five of the comprehensive plan. So I will say that although similar, this is not the same as the generally accepted accounting principles definition. So this is more broad, because we are using the CIP as a financial tool to engage the community. So the funding definitions, funding sources, so sometimes this is a sticky point. Yes, when you input a project or an item, you do have to identify a fund, but we do want them to categorically think of it in broader terms of what is truly your funding source. So if you choose a fund, is it the current revenue coming into that fund? Is it the fund balance that you're attempting to use? Or is it going to be a grant or donation that will come in, or has already come in? Is it going to be debt proceeds? So those are our umbrella terms of what is your funding source, not just the fund in which it's coming from. Then the funding status, of course, will be funded, meaning it will be in next year's budget, if that is when the project is to commence. Or unfunded, we don't know yet, but we're working on identifying it.
Jessica?
Yeah.
So are there, so there are projects, then, proposed in the six-year that do not have a funding source identified?
All funding sources are identified, but whether or not the funds are actually there, that's when we say not funded.
Okay, but it does, and in the, in the plan, though, and I don't have a copy in front of me, but in the plan, it delineates between what's funded and unfunded?
Yes.
Okay.
Question as well, so thinking about the Lata fire station that's come up, I think that's currently unfunded. When does that get moved to funded?
As soon as funding is available. So sticking with the funding, so this is the funding table. I will say that there are 460 projects in the CIP, which is not surprising, because, again, we're talking about six years' worth of projects. So what we have here, again, this is, this includes both funded and unfunded, because sources are identified, but whether or not the funding's there is a different definition. So this is a snip from the CIP, and where, what we can see here is, within the six-year plan, the majority of the funding has been identified as fund balance. And that is because predominantly what's in the CIP, about two-thirds of it, are what's coming from the Public Works team. So they're saying our utility rates, our retained earnings, it's going to fund a lot of our projects. And then grants is listed as number two. That can be their known grants, committed grants, maybe they've already been approved, or these are grants that we're applying for, that we believe we'll get. Debt, number three, REIT two and REIT one, RCW states that we have to parse those out, we have to be very transparent with how we use them. And then from general fund is about in the middle, and I will say what is driving this to be more middle ground than at the bottom is that municipal court justice center. We still don't know how we're going to fund that. So it's unfunded in the CIP currently with general fund, because it is a general fund department identified.
But, so Jessica, so we're saying that, and again, I guess it's theoretical, but theoretically in '26, we're going to take 25 million from the general fund to pay for that project? Is that what that's insinuating?
Right.
Okay.
That is what is implied, but whether we're going to have 25 million in '26 to do that is another topic, you know?
So how do we, how does that determination get made, that that project will be funded from the general fund and not another source?
That is our best guess when a project comes on board on the program, because it is a general fund department, that makes most sense, that's where it'd come from. But funding sources get updated annually, so if anything were to change, we would update that funding source.
Okay.
And then we have revenues, transfers, contributions, and then this year, what we have is something different. We have parks levy. You can see it's about 61 million for the six years. This is the levy that Parks is attempting to go out for, and once approved, they have all of their capital projects already in the CIP. So they are using it as a communication piece to the community that says, if you approve our levy, these are all the projects we would be doing. Okay, so I struggle with this every year. There were 93 projects that were added to the program. Once you subtract out arterial streets, because that has already been approved, we have 74 left, and I try to put them all on my screen, and it gets very small. But this is, this is pretty typical, because I would say in, like, the three years I've been looking at this, about 100 projects come on every year. And this is not to say that these are all the projects that are going to occur in 2024. These are all the projects that came on board that will occur sometime, as planned, during the next six years. So this is another way to slice and dice this data. This is the CIP by department. So previously, we saw the same amounts, but it was by funding source, so now this is the dollar amount by department. And this is where you can see Streets, Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste, they are predominantly the largest portion of the 1.2 billion that we have planned for the next six years. And then down in the lower right, we have the pie chart that shows what that looks like proportionally, and again, Streets Department, I put a little note there, already approved. This is where you find the CIP. It is 603 pages, so that is why we do not print it. It lives out on the website, and you can see, I've circled where the Citywide CIP is, but right below that is the Streets CIP as well. Okay, so as I mentioned, October 11th, Plan Commission did hold a CIP hearing. These are excerpts from their findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendations. A big shout-out to Kevin Freibot for helping through this process and doing all the touchpoints, sending out all the notifications, filling out the SEPA, all of the administration work that comes with the CIP. What I starred is, I know, also difficult to read. On August 24th, staff requested comments from agencies, departments, and neighborhood councils regarding the proposal. Two comments were received, one from the Spokane Transit Authority and one from the Spokane Tribe. So both provided advisory comments on projects included in the CIP for consideration. So basically, the tribe just wanted to remind us that we're on their ancestral land, and to please be respectful, and the STA wanted to say, anything that has to do with their routes, you know, to please include them. So those are typical, we get them all the time for when we ask for comment. What is that, letter F? That was, says, "A notice of application was published on September 1st in the spokesman review, and was emailed to the city's Plan Commission Distribution List, to every neighborhood council, asking for public comment." So when we just ask for not necessarily agency comment, we ask for public comment. Comments were received from four individuals, all stating their concern about Fire Station 5, so that is Lata, and its continued status is unfunded in the CIP. So that was the public comment that we received. And then you can just keep looking, but it says in bold, "In total, Plan Commission has approved and has recommended the citywide six-year CIP to the council." Okay, so the next steps are, there will be a first reading for the CIP ordinance that is adopting it on October 30th, and then on November 6th, there will be a council CIP hearing, and then the final reading that same night for adoption.
Okay, we still got a few more minutes, if there's follow-ups. Yeah, please.
So on some of these projects that are right now unfunded, and funding down the road comes to pass for those projects, this is updated, and then is the community, are there emails that go out and say, "We updated this section," or? How, I mean, how do people know, oh, okay, so those fire stations that we've been wanting at Lata, or the fire station that we want up there, okay, they finally have the money for it? I mean, is there a process that the public knows?
For Lata, I'm sure there will be a big communication about that, if funding were to be found, but when it just comes to the CIP in general, no.
There isn't.
Because there's so many changes to all the almost 500 projects.
But it's kept updated, so if anybody wants to look, they can
Right.
access the website and go through it that way.
Exactly.
Perfect. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any additional, anybody online? You see a hand? No? Okay, Jessica, I think you might get off pretty easy.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. All right, lastly, we've got track funding discussion in 1590. Kim McCollum, Steve McDonald, and I know Nicolette is here as well, in case there's anything for her to contribute.
Good morning, almost afternoon, council. Thank you for letting me be, us be here today. Thank you, Stephanie. I am here to, upon a request from council, to provide some of the 1590 information, as well as the proclaim liberty conversations that we've had in, a little bit in the past. So first, on the first slide, please, or, okay, thank you. This is, and actually, some information all of you received on Monday from Tanya Wallace. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to take a look at that again in regards to the, I know there's been questions in regards to what the projection on the 1590 is at this time, so you'll, as you've seen, I won't break it down, because I don't want to take up some of Steve's time as well, but you can see that in the end of the possible 2023 ending fund balances of roughly $11 million. So thanks. On this next slide, also, I was asked to update all of the 1590 projects that CHHS has had in their inventory at this time, and I'll be glad to read through those, because I know that's a little light if, and please stop me if you have any questions, but everyone was interested in the number of units, things along those lines. So the first one is the St. John's property, which is Canterbury Court. It's a rehab, it was funded for rehab of 54 units. The award amount was $1.2 million. So far expended is $646,000. I'm gonna, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna kind of shorten some of that, so I don't take too much time. They're on track to spend out by August of 2024, and they submit their invoices quarterly.
Hey, Kim?
Yes.
If you know, could you also kind of share what the full cost of the project is? So just to, so I can tell what our portion is covering?
I will get that for you.
Okay.
Councilmember, I don't have that, I'm sorry, I should have
That's okay.
probably looked at that, but I probably have to go back to some, that may be in the, that may be in the contracts. I can double-check that and get that to you.
I assume it's in their applications, but...
Yes, yes. I will, sorry that I missed that one.
No, that's fine.
And so then Liberty Park Community Development Center for the social, is social services, basically for coordinator within their residence of the subsidized housing. That total was half of that $24,350, yes, $24,350 is just half of what the supportive services were. That half is 1590, the other half is actually through ARPA, and they're on track to spend out by February of 2024, and that's just, the last part is that part that I've already talked to. The next one is Habitat for Humanity for Communities of Opportunity Permanent Affordable Housing. This is actually for 10 single-family units, some of it's acquisition of the land, rehab, or the construction. It's $1.8 million. It, so far expended out is roughly $1.4 million. They're on track to spend out by December of this year. This funds half of the acquisition for the land, the Habitat Land Trust, as well as acquiring and rehabbing the construction of the single-family dwellings. The next one is the Northeast Community Center Association, the Triplex, which I know there's been a few conversations on this in the past. It's two new units and one rehab. The cost is, the award, sorry, the award is $300,000, and it's, they have not invoiced yet, but their first invoice is supposed to be the end of this month. And last is the pending on the Spokane Housing Authority's Haifumi Inn, and that is new construction of 86 units. The pending still is 2.2581,320. There's been delays on this project through Commerce. They're hoping that the closing date will be around February, or the end of February 2024. So that's, is there any questions other than Councilmember Cathcart's question? Any other questions on that?
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
So the Haifumi Inn isn't 86 new units, though, correct?
The, there was, I think there was only 43 units in the beginning of Haifumi, 44, maybe, so they're tearing all of that down and having the new construction. So it's, you're correct in saying there's 43 new units, but they're considered new units because of the construction side of it, is my understanding on that. I can get some clarification. Councilmember Bingle on that as well.
Yeah, because we keep saying, you know, I mean,
Right.
realistically, net positive, we're not quite as many as we're saying are new units. And so I don't know if we need to make a change in our verbiage on that, but I'd like to see us do that, just to make sure that when we're talking new units, you know, if we say 1,000 new units, but realistically, it's only an extra 700 in the marketplace. I think there's a big distinction there.
Okay, thank you. I'll make note of that, and I will also get some clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just separating out net new units would be
Sounds good.
very helpful to see. And then just for future of these two, just having that total project cost, and then whether we're the last in, or kind of what our, our role in the project specifically is, I think would be really helpful to see as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And my last slide is what we had all kind of talked about in the past couple of days in regards to proclaim liberty, in regards to the Liberty Park expansion. So as you can see, it's 54 new units in that, a total of $19,371,263, if I said that. So as you can see, it's 54 new units in that, a total of $19,371,263, if I said that. I don't think I said that quite right, sorry. But that, this is where the 4 million from ARPA has been in ARPA, and you're all having those conversations about moving that ARPA, that 4 million into 1590. So you can, you can see that in, the city Spokane committed 1.1 of the home dollars back in 2020. I just wanted to give you some of this history because I think that's been some of our conversations as well. The ARPA was actually funded in 2022, or set to be funded in 2022. The home dollars, this is sort of like this first in, last out conversation, which I'll make sure I have for the 1590 as well. The home dollars were the first in money. That's usually just, as I say up there, demonstrates to the other lenders and the other partners that there is real interest in this development. So 1.1 was really helpful with that. ARPA is the last in money to cover the gap that was created during COVID, mainly to help with the supply chain, the labor, you know, all of the increased costs that occurred and the delay that incurred during COVID. I thought it was important to show what the other funders are. I'll let you read it. I, I mean, it's Commerce's National Housing Trust Fund, 1.6, almost 1.8 million. Commerce Housing Trust Fund at 2.1 or 2.2 roughly. The Commerce CHIP, and so for those of you who probably all know what CHIP is, but for anyone listening, that's the Connecting Housing for Infrastructure, two infrastructure program. That's, that was 680,000. Centennial mortgage was 7.6, and capital budget was 2 million. So the project was scheduled to close with all the funders at the end of this month, but Commerce has delayed that to December 2023. An important part of this, if this change happens, they need to have the some, we can talk about what they're needing at that moment, the letter and acknowledgement of the funding shift by the middle of November, because they're all in the middle of underwriting right now. So to be able to hit the deadline that they're hoping to hit at the end of December, that paperwork has to be in by the middle of November, which hopefully won't be, won't be a problem anyway. But, and then lastly, construction will start as soon as closing happens, which hopefully will happen sometime in January of 2024. Yes.
Yeah, I'll just say, this one is definitely a concern for me because, I mean, just doing the math, we're spending almost 360,000 per unit, which just seems extraordinarily high to me. And I really do wonder, 4 million is a significant amount that we put into this, and we're still not seeing progress on them actually getting the project off the ground. The 1.1 million in home dollars, were those actually allocated, or put in their hands, or were they just allocated on paper?
I would assume that that went through, I don't know, so I'm not going to make any assumption. It was 2020, but I could search that and see.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, that's almost four years ago, and to have those, that million dollars basically just kind of floating for four years is kind of concerning, that that maybe could have been put to actually getting units built in those last four years.
I, and I don't know how that, whether that has been expended or not. I didn't think to ask that question, but I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if there's, so if there's any other additional information, just to help clarify why the per-unit cost is so high, or just anything else would be helpful for four Monday.
I will be glad to, to ask those questions. And as far as the update on the 1590, I'll be glad to do that quarterly, or even if you want, it's more than quarterly, because we have the spreadsheet created, so I can always do updates as you need them.
Be great.
Okay.
Other questions on this, or anything else?
Yes, council member.
Any more information around Commerce delays? Is it just standard, or is there any reason for concern there?
I, I don't know whether, I think sometimes it's just maybe when they pull everything all together. They have, you know, in regards to the other funders. I can ask that question as well. I wish I knew. If Richard was here, he is out today, unfortunately, but that piece I can find out. I'm not as sure on that question as I would probably need to be. So I'm learning as I go as well. So thank you for that question, and I'll, I'll ask that. I can ask that to Commerce, too, and that way we find out directly. That's always a better thing.
Anything, council member Bingel, any questions from you? I can't see if your hand's raised.
Yeah, thank you. On the proclaim liberty project, what is the AMI on those units?
I don't know if Steve knows that. I would say it's under, I think it's under 60% of AMI.
Well, that's, that's my question, is just because if we switch from ARPA to 1590, then I know that it would have to be below 60%. So I just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in an oopsies, you know, with $4 million, so.
I will make sure, but relatively, being aware of this project, I would assume it's under 60, but that's an assumption, council member Bingel, so I will find that out.
Okay, I think I've seen on some other paperwork that it was 80%, and so just want to double check on that.
Okay, I'll find out. Thank you.
Legal term of the day, oopsies. I like it. All right, anything?
It's a very technical term.
Anything else? Any more to the presentation?
Just Steve comes up for me now. Thank you for your attention.
Great.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. So I'm going to be answering some questions that Nicolette passed on to us the other day, and also wanted to let you know that I did kind of go over this on a high level yesterday at the SLIC board meeting, because there was concerns about use of 1590 for backfilling for GFC. So we can, we can touch on that. So bottom line here, to answer the question, what are the administration's new proposed uses of the 1590 funds? To put it simply, we propose to use a portion of the 1590 funds that are earmarked for construction for building incentives, really. That's, that's it. And remember that currently, as stated in our SMC, 75% of the 1590 dollars are earmarked for construction of both affordable housing for 60% or less AMI, and mental health and behavioral health facilities. That's, that's 75%. And the 25% is earmarked for services, so ostensibly behavioral services and mental health services. So with that, first, I thought it might be helpful just to kind of let us all know what dollars we're talking about as far as who is at that 60% area median income. And as a reminder, 1590 is dedicated only for projects that serve people with incomes of 60% or less area median income. And in Spokane County, for '22, '23, that amount for the AMI is 58,900. Multiplying it out by 60%, you get a $35,340, that for one person. There's different levels when you have family sizes added to that. But that's basically what we're talking about, that level of income. And our proposal, obviously, is that 1590 qualified projects can use 1590 funds to help support the construction, defray costs for permits, defray costs for other, other requirements. That, that's the supposition. Here are some of the proposals that we have talked about. One would be paying a percentage of the permit fees based on the percentage of qualifying units. And while most of these projects that are providing this, this housing for 60% AMI are probably, 100% of the units are for 60% or less, we wanted to allow for the opportunity for projects that were either mixed use, or maybe they had 60% or less on, on one part of the building, and other parts had MFTE, say, which is 80%. So we just wanted to allow for that opportunity, and we want to make sure that the funding, as required, sticks with the 60% or less. So paying a percentage of permit fees based on the percentage of qualifying units, the example I give is 50-unit building, 25 units are 60% or less, 25 are, say, MFTE or something else, we would be paying permit fees equal to that percentage, basically. That, that's the concept. Another proposal would be for qualifying 1590 projects in the GFC upper zone, the more expensive upper zone. We would just pay lower-zone GFCs to begin with. That would be the, the automatic first step there. There would be no upper fees for these projects. They would all be at the lower zone. And then further on that, then, at that lower zone, we would pay 50% of that, we would discount that lower-zone amount by 50% and pay up to $40,000 on water and $20,000 on sewer, ostensibly with 15, some of the 1590 funds, other might come from other sources, but that's the, that's the idea. Yes.
Sorry, you're, you're talking about upper zone and lower zone as though it's a done deal. Is it a done deal? I haven't heard a report back from the committee that's making those decisions. So I don't even know if that's the outcome that they've come up with.
Yeah, and these are proposals. So if it came out that there was one zone, then we'd simply say we would apply a certain percentage here to that.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to cut in. So this is, this is developed based on what the ordinance currently says, which in March of next year would have an upper zone and a lower zone. So we've been working off of that assumption, but obviously, there might be a different.
Be tweaked based on what the outcome of the final.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Another proposal would be, and this actually is something that we've talked about before with a clarification rate clarification program, and this kind of talks to that. It's providing a utility incentive. And so for vacant commercial buildings or parking lot conversions to 1590 housing, they can receive a 50% discount off of all of their water, sewer and stormwater for up to 12 years. And we picked the 12 years because of the 12-year period for MFTE, just to keep it, keep it simple. But it adds up. It's not a, it's not going to be the deal breaker, the thing that, or the, the deal getter, not the deal breaker, but it, it will add up to, you know, about almost $5,000 per unit, per year. And over the 12 years, almost half a million dollars, $475,000. And this is something that we've been talking with Marlene about, and the justification there is, if you've got a parking lot or a vacant commercial building, it's not generating any utility fees, any utility income. So to be able to offer something for that period of time can make sense. We've also talked before about parking to people, and that would obviously be a program that would be available for the 60% or less AMI projects as well. And that actually equals almost a 10%, 9% reduction in cost for the sales tax that's paid for construction, and that includes labor and materials.
And is that, is our ability to defer and forgive that based on that RCW specific only to that proposal, or could we do it for, for a broader array of construction projects?
It's only, I, in order to have these kind of discounts for sales tax, that requires a state law, and that state law is specific to that being for construction.
For the parking to people specifically.
I'm not sure what you're asking, I'm sorry.
Well, it says parking to people, RCW 8292-10. So is that specific to parking to people, or is that a broader thing that could be applied to other construction projects as well?
Only specifically, the state law is only specifically for construction of affordable housing units on vacant and parking lots.
So I guess my question is, if that's the case, why not expand that to cover affordable projects across the city and not just the parking to people projects?
My help?
Yeah, yeah.
So parking to people, it applies to 80% to 115% of AMI. It can also go down. So it can also help the 1590 projects, and it is available across the city.
Okay.
So any parking lot is going to be developed, and that could be a parking lot that is already developed, not developed.
So that's my question. It has to be a parking lot that you're developing. It cannot be an affordable housing project.
No, it will be an affordable housing project.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
The law itself requires that whatever's built on that parking lot is, at the highest level, that 80% to 115%, but it also includes everything below that.
And the waiver, okay.
Yeah.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And then, then moving on to some other questions here, the question was, if proposing to use 1590 to replace, as revenue replacement for GFC waivers and permit fee waivers, is there a plan to identify an alternative revenue stream to fill these gaps? And it should be noted that there's a new state law, HB 1326, that does not allow utilities in the state of Washington to waive GFCs unless there's backfilling to cover that. And that's something that we're grappling with all over, because we have a automatic waiver in the three PDAs, and we had these waivers in the past. But going forward, there has to be revenue identified that's going to backfill that. That's, that's one thing. But in answering the question, as an alternative revenue stream, I'm not quite sure what's meant there, because 1590 is specifically targeted as a revenue stream to help build 1590 qualified projects. And that's the revenue stream that's identified for that. So I'm not sure why we would be looking for another source. This is something that's coming in, expected to come in at over $7 million this year and next, and for the foreseeable future, for as long as the law is in place, which I believe is a minimum of 10 years. So I'm not understanding, I guess, the, the point of the question.
Well, I'm just wondering, so is there a plan then? Because obviously, like, we just went over a few of the projects, and we're 2 million here, 4 million there, a million here, and that's just a couple of projects not even getting as very many units. And so I'm curious, I mean, is your plan then that we would only fund these types of things to create a platform for development, or would you, would you segregate it, and we would put a portion towards GFCs and a portion towards gap funding?
Yeah. So the idea is a portion of this 7 million coming in a year, or if we get to that point next year where we bond for this and have a larger amounts coming in over the next few years? Either way, it's to take a portion of this money and have it automatically go to some of these incentives to, to backfill those in, to pay for those, be it building permit fees, GFCs, et cetera. There might be other funds down the road that can help on the GFCs as we have that new higher amount, and there's a incremental increase in what we're getting from GFCs at these new higher amounts, and some of that has been already discussed as being earmarked for incentives. Next year, it's unlikely that we'll have much revenue from that as that program kind of gears up.
So.
But of the overall pie in the pool of the 1590, of that 75% that's identified for construction, the idea would we peel off a portion and have it be in a simplified program, much like how MFTE works, much like how the projects of citywide significance works, where a project qualifies by just meeting those standards, and you don't have to go through the steps to have an RFP or to do all these other things. It's, it's qualifying on very simple aspects of it, meeting those needs, that it's serving 60% and those kind of factors, very similar to the MFTE program.
So it's got to be, it's got to go towards affordable, that 60% affordable housing.
None of this fund can be used for anything but that.
Okay.
I mean, by the, by the law itself, yes.
Okay.
How long does it have to remain affordable if we use 1590 funds for the GFC costs?
I'd have to look at the law and see what that requirement is. But, I mean, I think for, for MFTE, we're talking 12-year for the 80% to 115%. So I imagine it would be that long or longer, but I'd have to look at the legislation itself. And the next question is, 1590 is required to serve people at 60% AMI or below, and the specific stipulated population set, set forth in the RCW. How will we ensure that only those groups benefit and that we're complying with the law? I mean, complying with the law, again, is, is the way we handle the MFTE. We set the standard that you have to have a project, say, for MFTE, that is 80% to 115. Yearly audits are done. Very similar system could be set up for this. We would be asking for the particular sector that they're, a particular project is serving, be it veterans or seniors or disabled, we have all those categories, and that can be something that's part of the audit. And that, that's really kind of basically how we do our MFTE. We, we make sure we go over all the rents for the number of units in the projects, at what income, and that, that would be the proposal here, very similar.
Would there be any additional requirements that they would have to meet? For example, I brought it up before, one of my big concerns is how much we're spending per unit, and so that their project would have to have a, a per-unit cost below a certain threshold, for example?
We didn't propose that that would be a part of providing, say, help with GFCs or building permit fees. That might be something that would be a requirement for other parts of this funding in an RFP, or funding up to a certain amount per unit cost. I mean, I think that's one way to kind of help get people driving to a better value would be to, to limit how much money you would be providing per unit to some amount. But for these specific funds that we're talking about, again, which is just a portion of the overall, we're just, if a project qualifies by providing this 60% AMI, we want to have that happen as efficiently and efficiently. to have that happen as efficiently and effectively as possible without having to go through an RFP and do all that. There's probably projects that will be going through a CHHS-led RFP process, but we're going to be helping with just that, that building permit cost part of it. This is just kind of our contribution, in, in a sense, to the other aspects of this that are in CHHS and involve RFPs.
Do you imagine this would work when we approve the, potentially approve the new GFC rates, that essentially we would remove the exemption for affordability, and they would apply for essentially a 1590 grant to cover that? Or would we maintain that, and we're just going to sweep 1590 in to cover it?
Yeah. I think all of those are questions that are open, because this new law really, this new law that requires that backfilling of GFCs is kind of a, a, a new thing that we all need to grapple with and find out, and we, we wouldn't want all of the 1590 to just go to GFC. That's why I think there has to be different sources, and one of those could be, maybe when we get partway through 2024 or further, that incremental difference of the new GFC revenue that we're going to have, because the rates are higher. And we've already said, I, I believe in the legislation that starts in March, that there would be some incentive proposals, and that's one of the ones that seems to make the most sense from that added GFC revenue. A portion will be held back and be used for incentives for projects that the city council deems, you know, that they should go to, basically.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other note here is that in the legislation that was passed here, there is a 2.5% admin fee amount that can be pulled, and so, like anything that we're talking about, when we expanded MFTE from the small centers and corridors areas to citywide, we obviously had a lot more projects coming in, and this has put a, a bigger workload on Terry and, and staff and planning, and so if we were to do this kind of a program with 1590, we would want to use some of that admin fee to have the kind of people that are doing this, you know, looking at these things and, and doing the follow-up audits and making sure that the projects are continuing to con, conform with the requirements, so. And another question here is, if removing 1590 from the purview of the Housing Action Subcommittee, what is the plan to use an equity lens when reviewing and selecting projects? So, it's important to know, we're, we're not suggesting the administration is not removing this Subcommittee. That's a decision for you guys. All we're saying is we're just going to take a portion of that 1590 money that's coming in and apply it in a way that can quickly provide some financial assistance to these legitimate certified projects. You know, we're seeing that $13 million at the end of this year sit there, and it continues to increase at $7 million clip a year. We want to make sure we're getting this out to projects, that they can use it, and we feel like that's an effective, efficient way to do that. We're not taking that committee out, or, that, that's a decision for, for you folks, and, and we're happy to be involved in that discussion, but this is just a portion of that money. And then, the other issue is, you know, the, the people that qualify for 60% AMI, that's, that's, that's definitely, those are people that are meeting this equity lens, whether they are veterans, seniors, disabled people, whether they're folks that are at risk of being homeless, et cetera. All of those folks are this class of tenant in these buildings. And so that, by the very fact that we have the 60% AMI, I think we're meeting the, the equity lens. And then the last one is talking about, you know, you know, it, it says in the question, when reviewing and selecting projects, and I think that's probably the strongest point I want to make. I mean, that, that's kind of the beauty and simplicity and effectiveness of this. We're not going through and selecting projects and, you know, picking one winner over here and not this project over here. It's simply either qualifies or not, but the very standards that we set up, they have to be providing units for 60% or less, right? And that's going to be audited and followed up, same way MFT is. We make sure it's, that, that they have the right number of tenants that are at 80% to 115% AMI by those yearly audits, and the same thing would be in place here. This is again about, we have this big chunk of money sitting there, it's not, doesn't seem to have been going anywhere. We want to be able to use some of that to help spur some of these projects on and give them a benefit.
Who does the yearly audits?
So, on, on 80, on the MFTE program, it's been Terry and other staff in planning, and that's, the workload's increased markedly, because we've expanded it to citywide, and...
But that's where they would, they would make sure that they're adhering to those...
Yes, and we, and, and some of that 2.5% admin fee that's in the law would be used to hire somebody to help.
Right, okay.
Because we can't continue to take on the new work without additional resources.
Okay.
Yeah. So, any, any questions? I'm happy to try and answer those.
Any further? One that was not brought up, and I don't know if Kim would have the answer to this, is, has the, and I don't recall voting on an SBO to do it, but the 2% been moved into the relocation fund out of 1590 yet?
Yeah, I have no, I'm, I'm not aware of that program.
I don't think it has.
I mean, it's, it's in, it's in RCW that that's what we're going to do. I, I don't know who kind of tracks that and, and make sure that that happens, but, but that is there, so.
I'll find out.
Okay.
I also, if I can have one more second, I, I had an update, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bingle, I have an answer to the, the AMI of Liberty Park expansion. So out of the 54 units, 41 are under 60% AMI, so it's about 76% of the whole units are under 60%. So, that's probably why there was a little bit of that 60/80. I'll find out more on that, but I did have that in my notes, I just forgot that I had it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Tony, did you have something to add? Thank you.
So, thank you, councilmembers. Yes, the new fund has been created, and 2%, certainly in 2024, the proposed budget does have the 2% going into that fund.
Okay. So, I guess, the way the law was written, is it prospectively, then? We wouldn't do it this year, we would be in '24, is that...
'24 was our understanding, effective January 1 of '24.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for Steve. What portion of the earmark, is it, it just said proposes to use a portion of the 75%?
We're not proposing anything right now, and I think one of the things that we, we need to look at, and this kind of came up on the discussion yesterday with the SLIC board, is we should meet with some of the groups that have projects that they're going to be moving forward on, and look at a few past ones and see how much they paid on GFCs, or how much they would pay. Like, we have to get a handle on some of those amounts, so that we can appropriately say, hey, we're going to need this much of that $7 million, or, you know, is it a third? Is it a half? I, I don't, I don't know yet. We, and so, that's something I'm going to be following up with, with Ben on.
And then a follow-up to that is, I guess, just to remind us what the current use of that funds are, so what it would be changing from? So if this is the proposal, what's the current use of that?
The current use of 1590, I think, as best we had Kim explain what that use is. I'm not aware of anything other than that. The current use of 1590?
Yeah, well, you're saying we're, we're proposing to change it, so I'm trying to remind myself what it's currently used as.
Well, right now, there's, there's no incentive for, for 60% or less AMI. There's no identified backfill for GFCs this new law came into place. So before, when we used to waive the GFC, the overall city, and in Marlene's view, which I think is true, existing ratepayers are actually paying for that when GFCs are waived. But going forward, we have to find a, a, you know, way to pay for those, and in the past, there was not an incentive to waive building permit fees. You know, I'm talking about plan review and inspection fees and those type of things. We're, we're trying to come up with one and feel that a portion of 1590 is the logical place to have some of that come from, because it would only be going to the 1590 projects in proportion to how many units they have, whether that's 100% or 50% or whatever. So, but there's no, there's no other source that's doing that right now, if that's what you mean.
One, one other would be helpful for me before we maybe, you know, vote on, on a proposal like this, would be to just have a better understanding of the CHIP program that we've heard a little bit about from some of the nonprofits. And I've looked it up, and it doesn't seem that robust. It's only 55 million statewide, which seems like, like it would go away in a day, but regardless, I know that exists, and so would like to have a better understanding of how that's working in relation to what's being potentially proposed.
Yeah, and found out more information about that, and that was also a concern of the SLIC members. They're, they're pointing out, why aren't you using CHIP? And it turns out, we are. I mean, through Public Works, they have four or five projects that they're actively either have finished applications for or currently applying for that money, which can go to defray the GFC costs, right? Other infrastructure costs. The problem with that, and that, that, those are ongoing, and I don't believe that the SLIC board was aware of that, but we are doing that. As you probably know, we have a limited number of people that can be keeping up to speed with all these hundreds of billions of dollars out there, and then, and then, once you identify one, it's who can be writing the application. But beyond that, they've already taken up that mantle and are, are working on that. We're trying to get trade in commerce, and we hope maybe that we could get your help in doing that through legislatively, or through...
Yes.
Is, is to get a chunk of that money identified for that very same thing, and then, as projects come in, we can say, hey, we have, we have this money that's used for this, and, and then talk to the developer. Otherwise, there's projects out there, we may have no idea, that are out there, that are, haven't come in yet for a pre-dev meeting or anything, and they could be applying, or we could be applying with them for that money, but that's just one on, one on, one on one. If we had a chunk of that money that we could make, that would be a way more efficient way to do it, so.
Well, and, and, and again, my knowledge of that program is surface level at best, but it seems like that could be something, if it is, if it does work well, that we could advocate for, for additional dollars being put into that pot. And then maybe, I, I get very nervous when it's dollars allocated statewide, because Seattle will just gobble it up. And so, maybe we could have them segregate that based on Eastern Washington versus Western or something like that.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
So the emails we're getting now are from nonprofits who are asking that those fees be waived.
Well, they weren't aware until yesterday that this new law requires that the GFCs be...
Okay.
And now, I, I mean, if I was them, I would want that to continue too, but we, we do have to find ways to...
Right.
To backfill it.
Okay.
And the other thing I, I want to say is that we're, this would be available to a for-profit company. Now, right now, 99%, if not 100% of these projects that are providing 60% or less are no doubt done by the people that are doing the good work out there in the city for this kind of thing. But you could see projects by for-profit developers such as Cause, or other smaller projects that have four units, say they do three, three market rate units and one 60%. And they do that because when they add up the incentive they could get for that one unit, and they add up defraying the cost maybe through a CHIP program, and they start going through those items, they could make that work. And we don't want to not have those folks be able to take advantage of this too, and so we're careful in how we're wording this. This would be available to anyone that meets that standard. Right now, it's going to overwhelmingly be the, the nonprofit groups, and they will always continue to be producing the bulk of those, but we all recognize we need more housing overall, and so if there's another way that we can get some smaller projects out there done and use that incentive, we would do that too.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? We've got about two minutes, three minutes. Hearing none, nothing from Jonathan online? Councilmembers opposed?
Was there anything else on the agenda? Was that...
Nope, this is the end of our agenda.
For some reason, I thought the homeless authority was still in there.
No, next week. Next week.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both. If there's nothing else, our study session's adjourned.